Councilman Guy.
Let's remain standing. Again, our kindly heavenly Father, we come thank you for this day. Thank you for waking us up this morning and bringing us right to this very time and place in this beautiful day that you created. Lord, we ask that you continue to bless each and every citizen in Chester County, and we ask that you bless each and every citizen that's in this building tonight. We ask that you continue to bless each and every employee of Chester County, each and every elected official. Then, Lord, we ask that you continue to look over our country and our state and continue to make us a shining example for the world. Then, Lord, last, I would like to ask you to look over the Mack family from Great Falls who lost their young child today in the Great Falls area. We ask that you look over that family and bless them and let them know that they can find confidence in you. These and all other things, we ask in your son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
So, we need to begin today by amending our agenda. I'd ask council to consider an amendment to our agenda. There's two items. First is that we would like to remove item 10A, which is the fiscal year 2024 audit report from Mr. Tommy Darby. He's unable to make tonight's meeting. He's sick. So, I would entertain a motion that we amend that. Let's do that one first.
I'll make the motion. We amend the agenda to remove item 10A.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to amend the agenda for that. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. All right. And second, I would ask that we would amend the agenda to move the proclamation honoring Ms. Madeline K. Feaster Miles from item 6C to our item just below the approval minute. So, it'd be just below three before the citizens' comments.
I make a motion. We move item 6C to before the citizens' comments.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. All right. Thank you. So, our next item of business is the approval of minutes. So, the January 21st, 2025, is there a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the minutes, January 21st, 2025, item A.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. All right, all in favor. So, next, we will do the proclamation. I'm going to ask Councilman Guy to lead this.
Okay. So, tonight, we're going to have a proclamation honoring Mrs. Madeline K. Miles Feaster. One thing I want to let the public know is, up here, we're all elected people, and people call us the leaders, but we're not really the leaders. The community's really the leaders, and it's people in the community that actually lead other people in the community to teach them and to mentor them. And Ms. Madeline K. Miles was one of those people. And we want to honor her, her life in mentoring and being an example for the citizens of East Chester. I don't know if Council McKeon wants to say something because that was actually his district, but we want to honor one of these leaders and one of these citizens and forever have her in the history of Chester County.
Get it for the folks sitting at home.
So, I'll read this proclamation. State of South Carolina, Chester County, a proclamation honoring Madeline K. Miles Feaster. Whereas, Madeline K. Miles Feaster, known as Ms. K., leaves a legacy as a beloved matriarch and devoted member of her community. Born on March 17th, 1937, she lived in the same home on Oak Street for 70 years, where she nurtured her family and fostered deep ties within her community. Ms. K. was a proud mother of five children and the cherished grandmother of 15 grandchildren, instilling values and love and compassion and resilience in each generation and creating a legacy of strength and unity. Whereas, Ms. K. was a dedicated and active member of the Queen Basheba Chapter Number Seven of the Order of Eastern Star and a member of the AP and B Society Number 11 and the East Chester Community Group Association, continuously giving her time and efforts to serve her community. Whereas, Ms. K. worked diligently for years at the South Carolina Department of Employment, workforce for four years, campus sportswear for 25 years, and Chester Hospital, where her work ethics and dedication were an inspiration for those around her. Whereas, her unwavering faith and dedication were a beacon of light for all who knew her as a lifelong member of Getsemane Baptist Church, where she faithfully served on the Usher Board and Treasurer until 2024, was a devoted pastor's aide, sang on adult choir, and taught Sunday School. Whereas, Ms. K. was known as a pillar of strength and compassion in her community, always offering help, wisdom, and kindness, leaving an indelible mark on the lives of those she encountered. And whereas, Ms. K.'s legacy of love, faith, hard work, and service will forever be cherished by her family and friends who had the privilege of knowing her. Now, therefore, I Pete Wilson, Chairman, on behalf of the Chester County Council, do proclaim that we honor Ms. K. Miles Feaster for her extraordinary life, service, and contributions to our family, community, and church. Her legacy leaves love, compassion, and faith forever, be a guiding light for Chester County community. We'd ask the family to come up and receive this. She's going to get a picture of us, too. We want to thank y'all for accepting this proclamation.
Mr. Guy. Corey, can I ask one thing? Is Allison Feaster that played basketball in Chester, or are they kin?
Down the road, down the line. Different set of feet, come from the same area. On behalf of my grandmother, late Madeline Feaster K. Miles, this is an honor. This is an honor. She always said she was important. Now, we see. We knew what she meant to us, and we knew what she meant to the East Chester community. But this now shows us what she meant to Chester County. She loved her county. She loved her city. I mean, she loved it. She wanted to be clean. So, to all your councilmen, keep doing what you're doing. And if you need this family for anything, call on us, because we want to follow in our grandmother's footsteps. We want to be like her. So, if y'all need us, call us. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this proclamation.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Certainly want to thank the large crowd that showed up. That really is a testament that so many people would show up and care so much. We're about to take this vote, and then I will... You are welcome to stay, but if you'd like to step out, don't feel afraid to step out either. Go ahead and be on your way, too. Either way, works for us. I will call for the vote. Those in favor, please raise your right hand to say aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next, we have our citizen comments. So, first on the list is Ms. Brenda McPrayer. If you would, if you would state your name and address, and I will remind you that we do have a time limit of three minutes.
Can I have a little bit more time?
We'll see. We'll try. You're my first person in citizen's comments, so you're testing me, but we'll see.
All right, I'm Brenda McPrayer. I live at 2633 Starnes Road, Edgemore, South Carolina, and I'm here to ask for help with Christmas in Chester. And Christmas in Chester is a event that we held for about 10 years, and we took a break for COVID. And I know a lot of things that we do is over the top. But, look, our children in Chester County, they deserve over the top. So, 12 years and younger, everything is free at Christmas in Chester. You cannot charge for one thing. We start with the tree lighting on Friday night. We'll have an ice skating rink that's open to all of Chester County. You can be a kid. You can come. John AG can come and skate. It's free, okay? Then, we move on to Saturday morning, and we start off with breakfast with Santa, with pancakes and milk. Each child gets a hardback coloring book, and it says, "Happy Holidays, Chester County", and it says, "Santa Loves to Visit Chester County." And I know, y'all, I could have these Xeroxed or whatever and just stapled them and hand them out. I don't like that. I like this. And it costs. It runs about $2,500. The skating rink this year is $3,600. It will be open Saturday for all children 12 and under free. Then, y'all, we bring in the snow. We have a real snow hill behind the library with sleds. 12 and under, you can slide all morning, and normally, the county administrator with his group runs the snow hill. Then, you can move inside the library, and you can read with Mrs. Claus, and you get a book. You can go visit Dr. Stone with your teddy bear and dolls, and he gives them a shot or whatever. Then, you can move on to City Hall, and you make an ornament. Then, you move on down the street, and you do Cinderella makeovers. They have glitter hairspray. They do their nails. They have tiaras. And I mean, all of this cost, okay? The snow hill, for example, is $8,200 and something dollars. We have a tea party with real silver tea service, china cups, and you should see those kids. We'll have characters walking around. We'll have heroes on top of the hill, which will be the police, the ambulance, the firemen. We will have face painting. The face painting, of course, is $3,325, because they don't just put a little sticker, they paint the whole face, and it's done by PBJ. And, you know, you've got to have puggy, stumpy, and frazzled to paint your face, or you, you know, it just doesn't work. And then, we have... Oh, that time's up. Then, we have a painting class at the bottom of the ARP church, and each child gets an eight-by-10 of an artwork that they created themselves. So, basically, I'm here begging for money. My budget is about $36,000 to put this on. I know that I could do it cheaper, like the characters and all. I could get teenagers to dress up, but I like licensed Disney characters that can sing and dance for those children. So, I'm asking if Chester County can put in $15,000, and I will raise the other money through business owners and throughout the county.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I was on the city council for 10 years, and she done a great job. She had everything nice, everything put together, and I do think the county needs to do something to help her. I really do.
Thank you, Ms. McPrayer. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, can I ask one question? Ms. McPrayer, when the money that you're requesting, do you need that? When do you need that money?
I would like it. I was going to say, let's call for a vote, you know?
I'm just asking when you need the money.
As soon as possible, because I have to make deposits on all this stuff. But thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Hester will be working on it. I'm sure he will be. And this is citizen comment, so we do have rules that we have to follow, but thank you for that, and Mr. Hester will be working on it. So, thank you. Next, we have Mr. Brady Sanford. Come forward. I'll remind you, if you'll state your name and mailing address, and we have three minutes.
All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Brady Sanford. I live in York, South Carolina. I'm here to speak to you about the rezoning petition for the new business for items B, C, and D that is in your packet for the property on JA Cochrane Bypass over by the Dollar General, and just wanted to highlight some of the changes that have been made since the planning commission meeting and the vote that has been happened, or happened, I believe, last month. But this is a project to facilitate the development of 114 homes. I have some example homes that I can show you and hand out when you guys get to those agenda items for discussion. And I also have my civil engineer and traffic engineer here for any questions or comments that you may have. But one of the main changes and complaints has been about the connection to the rear and to the existing community that is there. We have worked with staff to address that issue through a mechanism to allow for emergency management with a locked gate, but prevent ordinary citizens from using that element. Jeremy, your planning director, is also here to talk through other elements that have been changed at the request of the planning department, and those have been addressed as well. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to say hello. Feel free to give me any questions that you have, either during your discussion or now, but I know you've got other important things to get to really quick.
Thank you very much. So, we also, for our third person that signed up, is Mark Nelson. Is he with you? Is he speaking as well?
He's the property owner.
Okay. If you'll state your name and address, three minutes.
My name is Max Nelson. My address is 1224 Pickens, Columbia, 29201. First and foremost, thank you to the council for being here tonight. I want to express my hope that the county will take a good, hard look at this project and proposal and vote to approve this project. I want to thank the development team as well. They've worked diligently with the county planner and county administrator, Mr. Hester, throughout the process to address the concerns that have been raised by the planning commission, and they've worked very, very hard to come up with a plan to address those concerns and alleviate those concerns. This site, I think, is a prime site for this type of development. It falls within the neighboring community as a residential location. It's also not within the boundary where the moratorium has been put on PD's. I think this is a good site that will be viable and bring a lot of value to this area within the county where it's desperately needed. So, I appreciate your time and consideration, and I encourage you to vote to support this approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, where is that property? Right across from Walmart.
Behind the Dollar General.
Oh, okay.
But we'll have it on our agenda.
I got you. I got you.
All right, so that is all the citizen comments that I have for today. Next is public hearing, and we don't have any items for public hearing today, so that moves us... Number six, ordinance resolutions or proclamations. 6A is the first reading of ordinance 2025-6, the title only, and ordinance to dissolve the Chester County Rural Fire Board to create the Chester County Fire Advisory Board to provide for the governance, to create the purpose and implementation, to define the authority and scope and other related matters. Is there a motion from council?
I make a motion. We approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-6. Discussion.
I second it, the discussion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
My phone has rung off the hook all weekend. There is no plan. Mr. Hester and I talked not a while back, but there's no plan. There's nothing in writing. There's a whole bunch of men and women out here that want to know what the deal is. Each one of us, each one of us, Ms. Mosley put Mr. Williams on the fire board. I put Mrs. Jordan on the fire board. Mr. Wilson's got Mr. Martin on the fire board. Mr. Guys, Ms. Archie, I think I saw her. Mike has got Mr. Collins and Mr. Raines. I'm not... Gene Hudson and Mr. Kins has got Donald Trout. So, if it's broke, and that's the phrase I kept hearing all weekend, then we are broke. We, because if we have a fire board or a fire commission, and the people are not doing what they're supposed to do, then that's our fault. And these men and women deserve to know what's going to be going on, because they do this for nothing. We need to make sure that we support them, because instead of telling them what we're going to do, we need to be asking them what we can do to help them. Now, there's another part of this problem that we need to make sure we understand. The city of Chester, the Chester Fire District, is created by the legislature, and they don't answer to us in any way at all, except the citizens in Chester pay taxes that are put into the general fund that fund the rural fire budget out of that money that the citizens in Chester pay. Mr. Dutton's sitting back in there that he works for, I can't remember the little redheaded lady's name, she's very nice, but he has a fire board that is created by us, and he answers to that. The T. Melton's back there, he has a fire board that's appointed by us, and that's who he answers to. They can hire and fire those guys. Mr. Murphy has a fire board, and his fire board can do the same thing with him, and Mr. Abel, Chief Abel, has the same thing. But we're not talking to them. We're not talking to the fire boards who they work for. They've talked to all of these, some of these chiefs. There needs to be a plan of what we're going to do before we get in here and start changing things.
So, thank you, Mr. AG. So, I would ask Mr. Hester if you want to address some of those concerns that Mr. AG brought forth.
Sure, I'm going to do two things. I'm going to call Kel and Mr. Benson and Mr. McNeil up. They actually have a presentation. Now, I'm going to make a few comments, just to clarify that there is a plan. The plan has been discussed with council. The plan has been discussed with fire chiefs. While some of the chiefs do have special purpose tax districts, and they do report to boards, and those chiefs do report to a board. Those boards are appointed by this council. This council has ultimate legislative authority. This council is ultimately responsible for the finances and for the operations in this county, and that's what you've entrusted myself. That's what I've entrusted Mr. McNeil and Mr. Benson to work through. And so, there's a plan. While everyone may not understand the plan, I think they're going to make it very clear that what I think some people are very concerned about tonight is a very benign correction of a process to allow for communication, for oversight of finances, that we are all, that you are all responsible for. You answer to the taxpayers for those dollars, and effective communication. And so, I think before people get too worked up over what's going on, they should hear what's going on. So, I'd like to ask Mr. Benson and Mr. McNeil to come up and explain to everyone, because maybe the communication has gotten confused. And again, that's one of our goals, is to create a better form of communication with all of our fire, that we are all extremely appreciative of the job that they do, and we want to be able to provide them with the resources that they need to do those jobs. But we can't continue to go in five different directions.
So, we'll call Mr. Benson and Mr. McNeil forward at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councilman. Thank you, Mr. Hester, for having us. Today, I want to also say thank you to all of you firemen for being here in order to listen and see what we have. I really appreciate you. I've been a volunteer for 15 years in this county, and we have truly, I have worked with each one of them, and now is a time where I'm sitting in a position where we want to try to help and make this better. So, I would like to read this termination of the Fire Commission and establish a new Fire Advisory Board. Since 1983, the Board of Rural Fire Control for Chester County has been serving the county for the purpose of fire protection and control. Seven citizens are appointed to a four-year term by the county council to study and survey the fire protection and control problems in this county and formulate a comprehensive plan of fire control. The fire service in Chester County and nationwide has dramatically changed over the last 42 years, meeting demands of NFPA codes, standards that dictate the best practices in the industry and are consistently and constantly evolving, ensuring the citizens have the best fire suppression rating from insurance service organizations, which is ISO, and it is not only important for our residents, but also to our businesses and future residents and industries. To meet these stringent standards, the need of the county from the Board of the Rural Fire Control are no longer the best options for our county. Communication among the 12 departments must happen on a daily to weekly basis. Maintaining equipment and apparatus to meet NFPA requirements cannot be accomplished by only meeting monthly. The fire service has evolved into an essential asset to the county and requires daily management. The rural fire budget includes capital that exceeds $2 million annually. So, with that being said, that's just the beginning to why we want to create this new Chester County Fire Service Advisory Board. It is to enhance transparency of finance decisions regarding the allocations of county fire funds, enhancing services to our taxpayers, and eliminating duplication of services. We are proposing to the Chester County Council to establish this new advisory board, composed of the fire chiefs or designated or designee members from each of the 12 departments and chair it by myself, the Director of Fire. The board will play a pivotal role in advising on a strategic use of resources to best serve our community fire service needs by providing a voice directly from each department, thereby creating a more impactful and unity fire service. The new advisory board will incorporate the functions and the responsibilities of the current fire board, therefore, screenlining governance and improving decision-making processes. All decisions of the advisory board in request of the fire departments will direct, be directed through the Office of Emergency Services, and this will be the appropriate authority to be, to present to our Chester County Council.
You left out a very, very vital point. You just said the chiefs. That's what you said. Is that not true?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I just said a moment ago, the chiefs did not answer to y'all. They answered to the fire board that this board created. And I'll give you an example. Mr. Dutton, the town of Fort Long has two representatives on their board that we don't have anything to do with. They pay a fee to the great, to Fort Long Fire District. They're located in the town. The town of Fort Long has a lot of control over that fire district. They have a two million dollar building that they got a grant for, that this county did not have anything whatsoever to do with it, not even how it was constructed. So you're going to tell Mr. Dutton what he's got to do, but he's got a board that he's got to answer to. They're going to be paying him.
Excuse me, I, I don't, this board's not being created to tell anybody what they got to do, just like the...
That's not what he said.
Excuse me just a minute.
He said they were going to tell the chiefs what to do.
I, I don't, that's not what he said. So, does the rural fire board tell anyone what to do? They do not. They don't, they only allocate money that's given to them to allocate. And so, again, this board is to give every department a voice.
Yes.
Not to direct a voice to the departments. And so this board is a unified method for all of those departments to have a voice back. This is not to tell Mr. Dutton what, how he needs to run his fire department. It's not to tell Mr. Melton how to run his fire department. That's for their boards to do. So this is not an intention, it's, it's no different, the, the goal of this board is to do the exact same thing that the rural fire board does, except it will be manned by the departments and each department has a voice, the communication, instead of communicating to a rural fire board and then then communicating to a Chiefs Association. And then when it comes budget time, money being allocated from four different areas, it'll be one simple pipeline of communication.
Who's going to do the fire inspections?
So, um...
Who's going to do the fire inspections of the county?
That, that has nothing to do with the ordinance. If that's something that we need to work on, then that's, that's an undertaking that this board, that's made up of the chiefs, can get together...
One of the big main questions that I'm being asked, who is going to do the fire inspections of the fire districts and the, and the departments? Because according to state law, no man can interfere with the fire chief and the performance of his duties. He has the ultimate authority, even over the state fire marshal, to sign off on anything that needs to be done. Am I not correct?
Yeah, so you're speaking of the ex-fisheo of the fire chief having that...
The fire chief has the ultimate authority to sign off on anything.
Absolutely. May I say something for you, Mr. Agee?
You can't go in and override what he says.
Oh, no one, no one's doing that, Mr. Agee. So, um, what I would like to say to you is, uh, Mr. Agee, is this. This is a board and the board would make the decisions and we, as the board, as I sit at the chair, we will make the decisions on what happened in this county.
Let me ask a question. We, uh, we put this board together, this Fire Chief Advisory Board, let's say we put it together. Will this board, the decisions be made via vote?
Yes.
So in that, in that instance, the chiefs are ultimately making the decision. You're just chairing the, chairing the board?
That's correct.
Okay, now, the other question is, um, do we, we, we're not abolishing the secondary boards that these chiefs, these chiefs...
Their Chiefs Association?
Yeah.
No, sir.
Yeah.
We, we...
So all this board will do, so I can get it right in my head, all this board will do is take the vote from the chiefs to direct the funds, the citizens' taxpaying funds.
And it's more than, it more than, it's more than funds, it's to, if you go back and you look at that rural fire ordinance and what it entails and what it talks about, the responsibilities are, it's not just fiduciary. So it talks about creating a county fire plan for the future, five years, ten years, twenty years down the road. What does that look like? What does the data say? These guys, and, and then let's go past that, let's talk about deferred maintenance on equipment, let's talk about a truck plan, let's talk about, uh, insurance and all the other things. And so things that we are kind of running in several different directions on, this is a way of getting everything kind of funneled into one, get everybody operating, taking... These guys bring the priorities to the board, the board makes the decision.
So, in all honesty, in all honesty, they're not actually making the decisions, the chiefs are still making the decisions.
The chief?
Yes, sir.
Again, I, I, that's, that's a little bit why we're confused.
Because here's my concern, I, I got some phone calls about this too. And, um, one of the concerns was, you know, trying to, trying to, you know, hold everyone involved accountable, trying to hold the rural fire board accountable, trying to hold these two gentlemen right here accountable, uh, if they make decisions. But here's, from what I'm seeing now is, will, will, will Mr. McNeil have a vote?
He will, he'll be a tiebreaker vote.
Okay, all right. So, um, my, my biggest thing is accountability and making sure the citizens know what's happening with their funds. And I would think that, and I do have an appointee on that board, all of us do, but I would think that, my personal opinion is, to make it better, I think it does need to be the chiefs because they know more about fire than I do. I think they know, I, I, I manage a chemical plant, I can't tell you anything about fire and the tanks that they use and how long the hoses are supposed to be good for. So I would think that the chiefs, and my biggest drawback is, when you say chiefs or whoever they appoint, but just like I spoke with someone today, my thought process is the chiefs need to be on this board. I don't think it need to be anybody that they appoint. I think that they need to be on the board. If, if, if the secondary boards are giving them the responsibility to run the fire departments, if the citizens are trusting them to run the fire departments, I think that we should trust them to be on this board. I don't think that we should, the chiefs should give that responsibility to someone else. You hold the chief title for a reason. And I think they should, that's just like Mr. Hester, we hired him to be the administrator, but I don't think one of us should run the day-to-day. He's the administrator. It's the same thing with the chiefs. That, that's my biggest drawback. I think the chiefs need to be on this board. I don't think there needs to be a representate, representative from the department. I think it needs to be the chief. That way, you never can say that I didn't have a voice for my department, that chief. That's my, that's my biggest thing.
Thank you, Mr. Agee.
Let me clarify, and I agree with you. I'm going to tell y'all a little story. Ten years ago, ten years ago, Chief Martin and his brother were working a wreck in Dead Man's Curve on, uh, seventy-two. The sheriff of Chester County went out there and arrested them, put them on the ground in handcuffs, let them go, and then went back and took them to jail and they spent the night in jail. This county council, this county council didn't do one thing for those men. The fire chiefs, the fire chiefs had a meeting right in that room in Yoda and voted unanimously to hire an attorney. And that attorney got Mr. Martin and Chief Martin's records expunged because of what I said a while ago. You have to understand, the fireman has the ultimate authority. No man can interfere with him. Now, this county council, not us, I don't think anybody was on here to, they didn't offer to pay one cent of what the chiefs ponied up to hire a lawyer to get him out of all of that foolishness. Not one cent. To my knowledge, not one person on this county council went and said, "Mr. Martin, we're sorry." Now, he and his brother sued Chester County and they won because of how they were treated. Now, we have a diverse board of rural fire. Now, you're not going to have that with the chiefs. Now, I'm all for putting it on the chiefs. I'm a hundred percent for putting it on the chiefs. But the chiefs, as I said a while ago, work for somebody, four of them do. So you need to make sure what you're, what you're asking because I have a document right here that came from the state, that that's not necessarily true right now in this county. And I'm not going to bring it up, but Mr. Hester's aware of it and the county attorney's aware of some things that are not exactly kosher in the billing codes and the fire codes in this county.
Is there more discussion?
If, Mr. Chair, can I just follow up with one thing on Mr. Guy's comments, just very briefly? Mr. Guy made a very good point in accountability and so one of the things, again, the reason for, uh, Mr. McNeil to chair this board is, when, when there is priorities, when you talk about equipment and a fire plan, if that stuff is not being done, and I applaud the, the rural fire board in the past, the current one, for, for serving their community, but there comes a point too where, that if we aren't moving forward, there is no accountability. And so you all can't hold me accountable for things not getting done. You all can't hold me accountable for not having a plan for the future if we don't have at least, the accountability is the fact that he chairs it. And so that gives us, gives me a level of holding him accountable to make sure that the communication is getting all these people who need the communication, that they are working, that he is ensuring that they're working on the right things and that he's moving all that forward to create a plan. Every, every team needs a leader and every team needs direction. And that's all we're trying to do with this new ordinance. I don't, I think a month, two, whenever, well, after it passes, a month and a half, I don't think anyone is going to have an issue with the fact that this board is led by our fire chiefs. I agree, the chiefs, we talked about that. The only reason there wouldn't be a chief is if a chief, for some reason, opted out or, let's say that they were taking a night class and couldn't attend, they could appoint someone in their place. I think that's kind of our goal.
Yes, sir.
Well, uh, let's take it, well, I, I mean, I will back off and say if it can't be the chief, I think it needs to be at least the assistant chief.
Yes, sir.
I think it needs to be someone at the, at the top, um, so that, you know, we can, the citizens can hold someone accountable.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, we don't want a chief saying, "Well, I didn't go to the meeting, I don't know what happened." Well, no, a chief or his assistant needs to be at that, at that meeting. The, the last thing, the other thing is, who will, who will take the minutes at this meeting? Because I'm finding out and hearing that there is an issue with the minutes at the rural fire meetings now, that there is an issue with proper minutes being taken. Is that true, first off? And then, second off, who will, who will take the minutes to make sure these minutes are done properly, um, in with this advisory board? I would think that the minutes should be, the person who takes them should be supplied by the county or someone from y'all's department.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Guy. So the first answer to that question is, um, we have two forms of, um, minute taking. Um, we have AI form with the iPad that do dictations and then somebody have to go back and do the minutes on it. But we did just hire, um, a part-time secretary or administrative assistant that will be there to be able to do the minutes for us. Yes, sir.
Hey, let me ask you a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me ask this question. How many chiefs you got back there? How many of them, would y'all stand up? I got a question for them. Why y'all don't want this, what they offering? Can somebody tell me why y'all don't want this?
We haven't given any type of details to the plan. We found out, most of us, y'all will have found out about this Friday afternoon.
Oh, most of us, yeah.
We didn't know any details of it. When we seen the agenda Friday afternoon on the website, that's when we started, that's when phone calls started coming out.
We set the fire commission Monday night, had the commission meeting, this is the hot message. I got a text message Friday night from another chief from the next circle, minutes forty-nine. That's when the majority of the fire chiefs and fire bodies were hurt by it.
So...
That we've just been told there's a plan, nothing ever been laid out.
So, y'all been sitting here listening at what Mr. McNeil and them was talking about? How y'all feel about this?
We know that there need to be changes in rural fire commission. I've been going back and forth, I go to both leagues, Chiefs Association, and I am chairman of rural fire commission. I spoke with Mr. Murphy here, which is chairman of the Chiefs Association. They're establishing a committee to bring changes to rural fire. That is in process. One of the changes that has been mentioned is going before y'all and asking for rural fire commission, which is in now, be changed to a twelve-person board where each department have representation. We just got blindsided by this, they haven't been brought to y'all yet, the details haven't been worked out.
So do y'all think this will work out, what they talking about?
We still don't know the exact details. We know what has happened in neighboring counties. Neighbor counties that has an advisory board, it's just advisory. The office still knows what they want to do.
Let me, let me, hold on, Jean, let me, let me help you with that.
Hold a minute, hold a minute.
So there, there's an amendment, actually, that I didn't bring up. It's the county fire board, the word advisory is being taken out. So that, that was not meant to be put in there?
Gotcha.
Every commission, unless they're legislative in nature, every commission makes advisory decisions to council because, again, no one can bind the council, council's ultimate legislative authority. So the word advisory is coming out of that.
Thank you.
So, can y'all give this a try and see how it worked first?
Would it be easier just to take the board that you have now and amend it to twelve minutes, as the administration threw it all together? With the past administration in the rural fire office, they helped the volunteer commission take notes, come back and forth to council, because they were the ones getting paid. With the current office staff, we don't have that.
All right, so let's, um, focus in one more time. So we, we have a few council members who haven't spoken yet. Do y'all have any, any discussion?
The only thing I think...
Wasn't it going to straight? No, I was just checking with anybody else that hasn't spoken yet. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Agee.
My, my only point is, is they need to, if that's what Mr. Hester and, and these guys want to do, they need to sit down with all the chiefs and go through this stuff, get it all A, B, C, D with them, and I'm fine with it. Don't just do something and, and go tell them what you're going to do. These men do this for nothing. You need to ask them what they do, what they think. You just, you just said it, Mr. Kins. All they need to do is go sit down with all twelve of them and sit down and talk to them and come up with a plan to do.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Agee, and thank you, Councilman Killian. I'd like to respond to that, uh, just a little. And one thing that I'm built on is integrity and one thing that I am built on is faith. And what I will, what I will say is that I will never say anything bad about our volunteers because I am one, and I will not say anything detrimental to these hardworking men and women in our, in our county. But, Mr. Benson and I, we did, we split it in half and we reached out and we contacted and we spoke to the chiefs and we gave them an overview. Now, do you understand, sitting down, plan for plan, we gave them an overview of what we were doing, just like we are doing today. And for the most part, prior, uh, we had, um, we had willingness because everybody knows that the commission, um, has had some failures. I sat on the commission for two and a half years and it has had some failures. And I asked the chairperson that also. But I think with this advisory board, I do believe, um, this is a better, um, opportunity for all of us and to represent the departments and our office to make a streamline for this county fire service to be the greatest one of all. We can't look at, uh, what other counties are doing, we have to look at what we're doing. And I think we can make a difference together, I do.
Well, if you take twelve of them and sit them in that room like we did with Sheriff Onward, mess with those guys and you get all twelve of them talking to you, you'll come up with the right plan. You need to ask them what they think.
So, so if we, if we put all twelve of these, me and all twelve of these chiefs together, I think we're all saying the same thing, looks like to me. If we put all twelve of these chiefs together, we are all getting them together where they can come up with the plans.
Yes.
This is what this board is.
That's what this board is.
We're taking the word advisory out, correct?
Yes, it's a board, yes.
So it's no longer advisory because I know that was part of an issue that I had, someone called me and said that they didn't want the county to be able to, if they made a decision, give them the advice and then go a different direction.
Right. Right.
So, now, what I'm seeing is, these twelve men still have the capability, and they will have the, the right to vote on what they think needs to happen with these fire departments. So, in that case, Mr. McNield is not telling anybody what to do. It's just like this council. Mr. Wilson doesn't tell us what to do. He's just the chairman on, on the council. He has a vote, just like we have a vote, but he makes sure that our meetings function and, and flow the way they're supposed to flow. So, am I, I'm just trying to make, get it right, that this is, this is what we're all, that's what we're trying to do, just make sure that our fire service and our, this, this commission, with you chairing or Mr. Benson, however it goes, that it makes it flow properly so we can get things done for all of these fire departments. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. And you're absolutely correct. And the only overriding factor is council can override legislatively. They, again, no board or commission can bind this council from that standpoint. So, the, the one thing, too, let me just follow up from Mr. Rains being new. This is not the first that anybody's heard of this. Maybe the date that it goes into effect is the first, but since I walked in these doors two years ago, I've been told by fire personnel, by chiefs, that this needed to be fixed. In fact, I believe the minutes of the Rural Fire Commission from July and August have members of the Rural Fire Commission stating that we need to fix this now or they're going to fix it for us. And so, they have all been, all, all the chiefs were talked to, maybe didn't fully understand, because, again, that's why we're in Title Only, too. But the, it's all being explained tonight, and that was the goal. That's why we have three readings. That's why we have a month and a half to, to get it all finalized and hear, have input.
Well, you, you just said just the opposite of what Mr. Guy just said. You said, "They going to fix it." Now, the twelve men are going to fix it.
No, I said Rural Fire, Rural Fire said they were going to.
No, I mean, what's getting ready to be planned tonight? These twelve men are going to tell them what they want.
That's correct. You, you're a hundred percent right.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
As long as those twelve men can tell y'all what to do.
Well, they can't, no, they, they work, they don't work for those twelve. It has to do with fire plan. It has to do with the same thing the ordinance has. The ordinance didn't allow Rural Fire to tell them what to do, Mr. Agee. You know that.
I know that, that there was a person that was the fire coordinator, and she didn't like being held accountable. And she went to the county administrator, and he took the fire coordinator's job out under Rural Fire.
That was a county supervisor, correct?
That was, and gave her her own budget, and she didn't have to answer to anybody except the county administrator.
That, that was a county supervisor, correct? That wasn't, you're not referring to me.
All right, so, we'll, we'll move forward. I think we've had some healthy discussion. Certainly, as Mr. Hester said, this is first reading, and so, there will be two more readings. And so, there's opportunity for, for more input and for, for improvements. So, with that, I will call for the question. Those in favor of this first reading of 2025-6 in Title Only, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we have a six to one. Ordinance, first reading and the ordinance is approved. Next, we have six B, which is Resolution 2025-4, to amend the county's organizational chart to provide for reorganization of and establishing a position in public works and to provide for related matters.
Come on up, Ms. Bagley, please. She's going to present this. It has to do with the Public Works Department, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Last year, in your budget adoption, you approved purchasing a roll-off truck and a driver position for the recycling convenience centers. And after evaluating that, it seemed that with the delay in the truck, there was, it was more cost-effective just to continue outsourcing the hauling. And so, what we're asking for is to take that allocation for the driver position and allocate it to a landfill supervisor position, which should have no impact on this year's budget and a minimal impact of eight to ten thousand dollars on next year's budget. I think this is a wonderful idea. There's lots of deferred maintenance at the landfill. We've had, we have trouble with every piece of equipment. There are compliance issues at the landfill that someone needs to be accountable for. And right now, the recycling coordinator position, which is unfilled, is over all of that, the convenience centers and the landfill. And this position would request someone who had experience operating heavy equipment, and they could run the equipment at the landfill. Right now, we're, if our heavy equipment operator is out, the roads guys or maintenance is filling in a lot. So, I think this is a great plan.
All right, so, do you have anything to add, Mr. Hester? If not, I'll entertain a motion to...
If you have, if you have questions, I'll follow up with an answer.
I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 2025-4.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 2025-4.
Start it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Just for clarity, could you explain that again? Which one?
It's the same question.
Okay. Say the question for me.
It's bad when we both think alike.
Well, I couldn't hear either of you. Ms. Workman was saying something to me, too, so I was trying to kind of go back and forth here.
Yeah, we, we just won't, I heard it, but just for the public's sake, you know, in a, explain.
A little explanation.
I know we're moving one job to another job.
So, again, remember, if you all remember that council gave me the authority last year in an ordinance to make, and I say this for a reason, but to make organizational chart changes without council approval if there was no financial impact to the budget other than the one time a year in the budget ordinance amendment where you approved the organizational charts. Technically, this one doesn't have a financial impact on this year's budget. However, anytime that I ask council for a position and we don't fill it and we make it something different, I'm going to come to you and ask for a resolution to approve it. I think that's, that's the way we all work together. And so, that's why we're here. And so, if you, part of the budget ordinance last year, we budgeted for, in a process to reduce our, our recycling expenses, we were going to purchase a truck, a roll-off truck, we were going to purchase compacters and roll-offs for our sites for our recycling so we didn't pay rental fees. And so, the compacters, obviously, we get more time. And then, we were going to hire a driver for that truck. And, and we budgeted for seven months of, of that forty-two thousand dollar salary in the process. So, since then, there's been a lot of changes that come about. Number one, just like with fire trucks and everything else we deal with, all of a sudden, they told us when we thought we could get a truck, hm, you can't get a truck till June of 2025. So, now, that puts us in a predicament to get through the rest of the year. Then, we go back and we start negotiations, and that's been a nice thing with Ms. Bagley. She's really diving in and talking to all of our vendors, but through negotiations, we found out we might can do it cheaper by contracting with a little negotiation. We also found out that there is a huge need for supervisor at the landfill. Right now, as she said, whenever we have an employee, and we only got three, and there's only one that operates equipment, and when he's out, we have to pull somebody from Maintenance Department to go run a bulldozer on top of a landfill that they don't do on a daily basis. So, again, what we need out there is somebody to oversee that process, somebody that knows that equipment. We've got some deferred maintenance issues out there. We've got some expansion things that we're working with DES on. And so, taking this position right now will be no financial impact. I think it will actually behoove us in the long run. And as we reevaluate that truck, and I won't get into the nitty-gritty, but I think we can even, and we haven't come to council yet, she's doing a lot of research, but that money we set aside for that truck, we might can even buy more compacters at the rest of our sites for the recycling and negotiate a deal with the hauler for those and, and actually save even more money. She's looking into many different things with recycling, but we're really splitting that recycling, in the past, who supervised the landfill? I guess I should get to that. It was the recycling coordinator. Well, the other thing that, since the changes that occurred where we've had Mr. Levisster, Mr. Hayes have been helping in the interim until Ms. Bagley got here, and now Ms. Bagley's here, they all are coming back to me and saying that this is, this is not a one-person job. The recycle centers alone are a full-time job, and we need somebody to put their attention on this landfill to keep us out of trouble. And one, you know, is one scenario, but, so, that's sort of the, the long version of it that I gave you. And so, we're just asking council to approve that, transfer of that position. Thank you.
All right, is there any more discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor of Resolution 2025-4, raise your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. All right, so, we've already completed the proclamation honoring Ms. Madeline K. Feaster Miles. I want to thank Councilman Guy and Councilman Killian for, for your work on that. That was, that was really special. So, thank y'all.
Thank you.
So, next is the Administrator's Report. Mr. Hester.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm going to keep this brief because I know we are, we've extended a little bit. Just some information, I got this this afternoon and thought it would be appropriate to read tonight, but from the South Carolina Coordinating Council for Economic Development, and Mr. Long probably got the same thing today, that we have a letter regarding Roseburg Forest Products that, based on the information that's been provided as of January 29, 2025, the company has invested two hundred, is that correct? Two hundred and two million dollars and some other numbers, and has created a hundred and fifty-eight new jobs. Therefore, the company has exceeded both investment requirement and the job requirement. As a result, the South Carolina, South Carolina Coordinating Council for Economic Development has agreed to end the grant period as defined in their performance agreement, as defined by, as defined by the agreement. So, basically, that information just telling you that Roseburg has exceeded what they have promised to do, and South Carolina Economic Development Council has recognized that. I just briefly spoke about Mr. Hayes and Mr. Levisster and their assistant in public works, and I just want to publicly thank them. Since the transition, they both willingly stepped up and took on individual roles within Public Works Department in addition to their normal duties, and they both took on quite a bit. The recycle centers alone, just, they get called on the weekends, they get called at nights, and the same with the landfill. They've, they've had to work in areas that they had no knowledge of, but they took the initiative to learn and to accept it as their responsibility. Not only did they do that, but when Ms. Bagley started, they've both graciously stayed by her side and continue to go to meetings to make sure that we have a smooth transition. And that's, that's really the key to this leadership team that we have here at the county. And, and just, that's, that's what I, that's what I'm more proud of than anything, is that teamwork, that ability to go way above and beyond, that the citizens don't always see the work that's going on, the work at night, the work on the weekend, the work on the phone constantly that these guys and girls are doing. And so, I just want to publicly thank them for what they did to make the transition smooth and what they're still doing, to continue to see that Ms. Bagley has a very smooth transition, and she is doing very well learning that transition. Just a reminder, we will be closed February 17th for President's Day. The county will be. Ms. Bagley, the recycle centers and the landfill will both continue to be open that day.
I, I'm, I'm fairly certain that that's the case.
We don't shut those on that holiday. However, the remainder of the county will be closed. And then, I just want to read a quick letter that I got from Chief Deputy Brad Douglas from Fairfield County Sheriff's Office. Dear Mr. Hester, on behalf of the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office and the Fairfield County Animal Control, I extend my sincerest gratitude for the invaluable assistance provided by Chester County Animal Control Director Jesse Roof. On January 9, 2025, her prompt and professional response to support in allowing us to use Chester County's Tranquilizer Dart Gun and her help in taking a pit bull mix into custody was a tremendous act of compassion and collaboration. The dog, who was found sleeping in a cold without any shelter, is now safe and warm under Fairfield County's care away from the winter weather. Director Roof's dedication and willingness to assist in other agency in need exemplifies the spirit of teamwork and community service. Her efforts not only ensured the safety and well-being of an animal in distress, but also strengthened the bond between our counties. Please convey my heartfelt appreciation to Director Roof for her exceptional support. Her actions made a meaningful difference, and we're grateful for Chester County's commitment to helping neighboring counties sincerely and with gratitude, Chief Deputy Brad Douglas. I got another letter from Fairfield Animal Control thanking us for the same thing. Evidently, this was a, an animal that they had been chasing and trying to capture for quite some time, and this was an after-hours event where Ms. Roof called and said, "Can I please go down there and help them?" And of course, we obliged. So, just wanted to recognize that as well. And with that, that concludes my Administrator's Report, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hester. So, next we have our number eight is Consent Agenda. So, we have seven items on the Consent Agenda. Those are A, which is the third reading of Ordinance 2024-18. B is the third reading of CCMA 24-15. C is the second reading of CCMA 24-16. D is the second reading of Ordinance 2025-1. E is the second reading of Ordinance 2025-2. F is the second reading of Ordinance 2025-4. G is the second reading of Ordinance 2025-5. Is there a motion? Is there a motion for those?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Consent Agenda items number A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. All right, next is Old Business, number nine. Nine A is the third reading of CCMA 24-13. John Agee, request tax map number 124-00-00-052-000, located next to 3302 Lancaster Highway, Ridgeburg, South Carolina, 29729, to be rezoned from Single Family Residential District RS1 to Rule 2 District R2. Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve. It's a pleasure of council.
I'll make a motion, we accept the third reading of CCMA 24-13.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
To, to say one more time for the citizens, this has to do with my military retirement, and I had to change this over to get that taken care of. So, that's the purpose of this rezoning.
Any more discussion? And Mr. Agee, he has not voted on any of the readings.
No, I don't.
And so, he's recused himself each time. So, with that, is there, is there, I will call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, we have the nine B, which is the third reading of CCMA 24-14. Joaquin and Joanne Gonclavos, request tax map number 122000066000, located at 2482 Clinton Road, Edgemore, South Carolina, 29712, to be rezoned from Rule 2 to Rule 1. The Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve. It's a pleasure of council.
I'll make a motion to approve the third reading of CCMA 24-14.
I'll make a motion to approve the third reading of CCMA 24-14.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I will say it one more time, the people around this, and Mr. Raines was on the Planning Commission when this was approved, and there's, very rare, as I said before, to vote against the Planning Commission, but these people that live near this, they are really against it. Now, that's what they tell me. One of them called me and Mr. Guy, and I talked, and I gave him Mr. Guy's number, and I do not know if he called or not, but for the sake of argument, it is a real problem with people that live there. These people have been living there a long time, and people came in, and their property lines and all this kind of stuff a problem.
Is there any more discussion? I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. The third reading passed as six to one. Next is, of course, earlier, we struck the audit report for tonight, since our treasurer, Mr. Darby, is, is sick, so that takes us to 10B, which is the first reading of CCMA 24-17. Vista Resources LLC, request tax map number 0790117018000, which is 1.47 acres, located at 2228 JA Cochran Bypass, Chester, South Carolina, 29706, to be rezoned from General Commercial District to Plan Development. The Planning Commission voted four to one to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve first reading of CCMA 24-17.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
This is the property next to the Dollar General. Is this, this is what the guy got up and said something about.
I, I think it might be helpful if we had our planning director, Mr. Ward, come forward, and he could give a brief overview.
Yes, sir. Chair, council, honored to be with you. So this site is a total of 45 acres. It is there off of the JA Cochran Bypass. It is directly behind the neighborhood with Hughes Street, Lodge Street, and Elk Street. They are off of Old York Road, beside the railroad, behind the Dollar General. It is 45 acres, split across three parcels. The proposal for Mr. Sanford calls for 114 lots to be built, on approximately 6,500 square foot lots. There is roughly 35% of, of the land that will be saved as open space. Over the past few weeks, over the past month, really, we have been working with them, with Mr. Hester, to look closer at this after it was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. They recommended it for approval by a four to one vote. As, as you know, with the current way that our subdivision ordinances are written, staff has the obligation to review it first and send in comments in consultation with county leaders. That was what I did, and I believe you have the memo with you that outlines some recommendations. Since that time, we have further talked with their engineers, looked at the site. There have been some things that we did not know. So I will briefly cover those. There were five recommendations. One was with the park layout. They currently have three options for a park. One is a public park, and then a dog park, and then a playground. And we've talked through some of our concerns with those from a safety standpoint, and they're currently working through shifting those sites around, but, but they do not have that new sketch plan yet. As you know, there was concern by some of the county leaders and some of the neighbors who live behind there regarding their second access point. Our current ordinance, I believe it's ordinance 2022-5, requires that neighborhoods with over 100 sites have two access points onto existing roads. The main access point for this will be onto the JA Cochran Bypass. Their proposed second site, or second access to a road was off of Lodge Street, which is that one that ties into the existing neighborhood. Again, there was concerns about increased traffic on that road. The idea was brought forth to put a second access point onto Old York Road beside the existing stream there. We have since found out that that stream, which is a cross between a ditch and a seasonal creek bed, is how I would say it, is not continuously flowing, but it is a jurisdictional water. It complicates things. The slope is also there. So we came up with a compromise of having a gate involved that would be on a gravel road that leads from the neighborhood to Lodge Street. We would put an emergency, emergency gate or fence accessed by Knox box that would satisfy our requirements, that only require one full-time point of entry and another point of entry that can be for emergency purposes only, and that would still allow the site to be accessed by all of our emergency personnel. We also made a recommendation that there be sidewalks installed on each side of the street. I think that has become less of a priority. We also were curious about exploring, exploring some alternative methods for handling stormwater on the site, and I believe that the soils there, it turned out that they are clay, Iredale loam, which has a very high clay concentration, and I believe their original recommendation for detention ponds is the correct one for this situation. Finally, there were a few setback issues that had to be resolved. But overall, I believe that this is an excellent site for new growth. This aligns with our current 2020 comprehensive plan, which calls for growth in this area. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have, and I know that the owner and the development team is also here to answer any questions you may have about it.
Yeah, so I'm gonna start first because it's in my district. I got a few, few questions that you might can answer. When this development is, when they start this development, is this gonna be front-loaded or back-loaded? Will those, will the houses be in the front of development coming in, or would they be in the back? I got citizens concerned about how fast the houses may sell, going and clear all this off, and then, you know, it looks a mess before all the houses are sold. So what's the plan?
We have not gotten into the details yet of how the, how the site will be developed, if it's front to back, or how the front-loaded garages perhaps, we haven't gotten into those details yet. These comments are more for the high-level overview of anything with the sketch plan, but I'm sure they can answer those questions.
When do you know, when do you know if you'll, you'll have that information? When we, how soon after this process will you be able to?
Yes, sir.
We can have Mr., I don't, I don't.
Sanford.
Sanford. You could come forward and just, if you would, just answer just that specific question, and if we need you again, we'll call you back up.
To answer that question, it is likely that this community, being the size that it is, would be fully developed with all streets and infrastructure at one time. And then it is probable that, given the main entrance would be off of JA Cochran, that is where a model home would be, it'd be proximate to that entrance, and would start from there and move towards the back.
Okay, and I'm just gonna keep you while you're here. The entrance to Elk's Drive, to be clear, so that those citizens will understand, that is not an everyday entrance. There will be a gate right there with a, where the Knox box is, is a box that only the fire, only the fire department can get you, right, with a key to open that gate up?
Correct. And I actually have a photo representation I can provide to anyone who is interested. There's a similar community in York that I have seen with this exact type of access. It, it would not be available to the public, but just emergency services.
And last, that development behind it, all of those houses are brick homes in the Elk's Drive area. You got brick homes there, all of them are ranch-style brick homes. I know that for sure. So my, I just want to know what type of veneer are we planning to put on these houses in this development? Are they gonna be vinyl siding? Are they gonna be brick? Are they gonna be hardy plank? What are they gonna be?
As a part of the development agreement, we are agreeing that there will not be any vinyl siding in the community at all. I will add, however, that while the first street is exclusively brick ranches, the next street most proximate to this is actually largely double wides. That is correct, that this, that is directly adjacent to the parcel. It's even zoned for main factory house.
Oh, yeah, you're talking about the, the mobile home part, yeah. I'm, I'm, I understand. I understand, I know about the mobile home, I'm talking about.
The community will be exclusively forbidden from vinyl siding.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Hester, if you could speak to the development agreement, when, when would that take place, and how would that come about?
So, it's already started. We started that process a couple weeks back in an effort to get in front of this. I can tell you that Mr. Sanford's been extremely amenable to work with, from Mr. Ward's standpoint and my standpoint with regard to the developmental agreement. We wanted to really wait to see if there was anything that council, again, you guys have the input on this, so the goal would be, after this meeting, to take away any, any other things that council felt or were looking for from the subdivision that we missed or wanted us to consider, to take that back to considering the developmental agreement. But as has been discussed with Mr. Sanford, there is a developmental fee. Council also openly, in open session, asked me to provide incentives related to location of plan developments, to push and incentivize coming in closer to Chester, obviously, as well as for construction materials. And so that has all been discussed with Mr. Sanford. We have had initial discussions. My goal would be hearing where you guys are at tonight, then I'll go back and finalize those discussions, and then bring you back a developmental fee incentive to consider before we move forward.
And would that, would that be attached to these ordinances, or would it be a standalone ordinance?
The developmental agreement would be attached to the ordinance.
So, so it would be approved at third reading?
That's correct. So I talked to Mr. Kozlarik by email to have him begin work on that agreement as well. But again, hopefully, if we can, if we see the direction, we can have all that by third reading.
What about the Justify District? I sent the Justify District, and as the chief of the Fire District's seen all this, I don't remember a lot of it, but I remember one of the areas back toward the Dollar General was gonna be really tight and trying to get a fire truck in there and, and all that. It looked like it was real narrow. So you, if you need to get Chief Jackson to look at these plans before we do anything.
That's an excellent point, Mr. Agee. I have not presented the plans to him yet. How it has been done in the past is if the county council approves the rezoning. Again, how it is now, there's a whole separate subdivision approval process. They submit their preliminary plat, the final plat, and all that is, we communicate with the fire chief about that, give him all the plans, but that has not happened yet. If you would like to, I can consult with them prior to the second reading.
Well, you just need to make sure they talk to Chief Jackson. It's not, it's not Mr. McNeil or Mr. Benson.
Of course.
It is the Fire District that you've got to get through, and they're, they're completely different than, than these guys.
So, Mr. Ward, if you could remind council and public about how the process works, once the, if a third reading for a plan development is approved, going forward from that, how it comes back to the Planning Commission? Can you talk, talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. The way that the process is now, again, it has to come before the Planning Commission once for the rezoning. It comes before county council three times for the rezoning. Staff is working in, in between with, with the real estate developer to make sure everything is as it should be, and then there's the whole subdivision review process. And we currently have that broken up with the plan development rezoning, and then the subdivision review process. So it gets highly extensive review. They, the real estate developer will present their preliminary plat before the Planning Commission. They will review that. Staff will review it as well, and then they will present their final plat to the Planning Commission for review as well. After the final plat review will, or, I'm sorry, right before the final plat review, they will submit their performance bonds for any infrastructure that they install. That will be reviewed by county council at that point, and then they will submit their final plat for review. And that ensures that what they're presenting is in conformance with fire codes, building codes, all the other codes, zoning ordinances that our county has for subdivisions.
All right. Is there any more discussion? Thank you. All right. So with that, I will call for the question. So those in favor of the first reading of CCMA 24-17, I ask that you raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. All right. So next, we have item 10C, which is the first reading of CCMA 24-18. Again, this is Vista Resources LLC, request tax map number 0790117013000, which is 32.24 acres, located behind 2228 JA Cochran Bypass in Chester, to be rezoned from multifamily residential district R2 and R1 to plan development. The Planning Commission voted four to one to approve. What's the pleasure of council?
I'll make a motion. We, we move forward with the first reading of CCMA 24-18.
I'll second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Next is 10D, which is the first reading of CCMA 24-19, Vista Resources LLC, request tax map number 0780101034000, which is 11.38 acres, located behind 2228 JA Cochran Bypass in Chester, to be rezoned from general residential district, multifamily residential district, which is RG2 and RG1 to plan development. The Planning Commission voted four to one to approve.
I make a motion we approve the first reading of CCMA 24-19.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just for the public's, just for the public, all three of these pieces of property are about the same development we're talking about.
All right. Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. All right. So this brings us to 10E, which is a statement regarding local municipality annexation. Councilman Corey Guy.
Yeah, before I want, before I read my statement, I just want to say a little bit about what's going on in Chester County as a whole. As you can see with this last development we just approved, we have a lot of growth happening in, in Chester County, in the city of Chester, in the Richburg area, the Rodman area, and so forth and so on, so forth and so on. So what I wanted to, I wanted to read the statement because I've noticed that some of our municipalities are annexing property into the, into their municipality, which I don't have a problem with, which is great. It will actually help them have a tax revenue. But the problem is, I think that the county needs to, needs to sit at, seat at the table when we, when these annexes, annexations happen. And one of the reasons why is because when these municipalities annex, it affects the county. It affects us, it affects our services, it affects our fire services, we just talked about it, it affects our EMS and our sheriff's department. So I'll read this statement, and then the statement will talk more about how I feel about it. It was brought to Chester County Council's attention that annexations are taking place, or could take place in multiple municipalities. I have some concerns from the Chester County Council perspective based on the services and demands that could potentially be placed on the county. It is my understanding that each municipality is supposed to provide some services to the annexed area. However, logically, it is unclear whether those services, such as road maintenance, EMS, fire services, animal control, et cetera, can be supported fully by the municipalities. Therefore, creating a concern that the responsibility would fall to the county as to infrastructure, fiscal responsibility, all while creating a bigger tax burden on the citizens which are annexed in the area, especially when the area is in the county, is being annexed into a municipality to circumvent county building codes, county zoning regulations, county developmental fees, and other standards that the county has in place. The issue then becomes the potential for a large influx of development without the oversight and regulation that the county typically imposes, creating a burden the municipality simply is not prepared to handle. Overall, I believe a discussion must take place between the municipalities and our, and the Chester County Administrator, Mr. Hester, to involve the municipalities in the county's comprehensive plan update, infrastructure issues, and other future plans of the county to allow Chester County and municipalities in the area to all be on the same page. Including in this, this discussion could be the consequences to both the city and the county of unregulated growth without foresight, foresight and planning. I request, I'm asking the council, to let Mr. Hester attempt to have such conversations with municipalities and the impact they may result. I ask Mr. Hester to explore the option of service fees that the county may impose if it is increasingly burdened by providing services in annexed, annexed areas. So I'm asking the county council to let Mr. Hester go to some of these city council meetings, some of these city governments that are annexing property, and just have a seat at the table so that they will understand the burden that the county taxpayers may have because these cities are annexing without developmental fees and not really realizing the impact it has on the county as well. and not really realizing the impact it has on the county as well."
Mr. Wilson and I chatted a little bit the other day. We had an opportunity to have a little conversation. And back a while ago, back a while ago, before COVID, the county council, the city of, town of Great Falls, the town of Ridgeburg, town of Fort Long, the town of Lowry's, had a meeting on the fifth Monday night of every month where they did exactly what you just got through talking about. Is that not?
That's right.
And so, at any rate, that would be what you're wanting to do. If we could put that back in place, to meet on the fifth Monday night of every month, for the sake of argument, at the gateway, by supper, whatever the case may be, where we would have those mayors, those council people, all coming together where we could sit down and talk to each other. I think that would be a very good thing, because annexation in some of these communities is getting ready to happen.
Yeah, it's happening now, and we're all sitting at a Chester County council meeting. And I do know people who live in these municipalities pay taxes for that, that city that they live in, but they also pay county taxes. But then we have some people that just live in the county. And, you know, ultimately, the county, the county is responsible for these services. So if these municipalities annex, and they annex, I hate to use the word irresponsibly, but that's the only one I come up with right now, but if they annex, not realizing the burden that it puts on the county, now the county taxpayer that does not even live in that municipality may have to suffer the burden. We haven't raised taxes in Chester County in the last two years. We don't want to get in a situation where we have to raise taxes in the county because municipalities are annexing and can't provide fully the services that are needed. Now, we got, we got to have a higher head count in the sheriff's department, a higher head account in public works, so forth, EMS, so forth and so on. So I think that our administrator, however we do it, Mr. Agee, I'm okay with that part too, but we need to have a seat at the table with these municipalities that's, that's annexing this land. And one of the reasons why this annexing is taking place is because we have developers that feel like it's easier to build their development in these municipalities because the rules aren't as stringent. They don't have as many, they don't have a planner, they don't have a billing and zoning director. So these, these develop, these developers say, hey, it's easier for me to go to this municipality right here, and I can get my development done, and I don't have to deal with all of the, all of the rules. So that's one of the reasons why it's happening. So I think what we need to do is give our administrator the permission to talk with these municipalities so we can all be on one page.
Well, what you also have to realize, Mr. Guy, is, is the sewer district, the water district, the National, Natural Gas Authority don't have any, we don't have anything to do with that. We put us all in a room and talk, that's what I was trying to, to get to, where we can have that conversation.
And if, if I may interject, Mr. Chairman, too, just another comment. Can, can sometimes be troubling is, as we begin to work on our comprehensive plan, as we take input from the community on the comprehensive plan, many times they take land that was designated for, or they have the ability to take land that's designated for industry. Industry is what brings revenue to the county. And industry is what provides us with a level of revenue that can provide for the services. And the assessor's back in the back of the room, he can back me up on this, but the tax from a residential taxation, we actually lose twenty to thirty percent from a service standpoint on the dollar that are taken in from a taxpayer, as opposed, or the planner can back me up on that, too, as opposed to that of industry. So it's important that when we identify land for industry, and our comp plan says this is industry land, that the municipalities are on board with what that land is to be used for, because it directly impacts the services we provide.
Well, let me just say this, as the at-large seat, I've had this conversation with Chairman Wilson this past week, and I've also had it with Mr. Hester. And I've already reached out to mayors of these municipalities to also attend and kind of be a voice, you know, or an ear, to kind of find out what's going on between the county and these cities as well. So I just kind of wanna interject that also. You know, holding the at-large seat, I honestly just represent every single person in every single district here. So I don't think it would be, I don't say negative for me to attend as well. So just so everyone is aware, I've already kind of reached out to those persons, so I'll be in attendance as well.
All right, so, yeah, so, Mr. Guy, I'm certainly with your recommendation that we, we ask Mr. Hester and the chairwoman, woman, mostly if you can attend. That sounds good to me as well to continue this conversation. And we certainly, you know, we have our development fees, and we don't want folks to do an easy workaround on those fees, and then the municipalities not be able to offer those services that you spoke about. So certainly, I'm, I'm on board with that. And, Mr. Agee, to your point about the fifth Monday night meetings, I guess that would be, I don't know, two or three or four a year. Certainly, I think that's a good idea, and that's something I'd like to see us work towards. What's that?
No, I'm just saying, if, that's something that I think would be great for our clerk, council, to reach out to the other clerks to, for them to run through their councils and see if we can organize that.
Do some background to figure out how that would work and some of the logistics of it. So, yeah, we'll, we'll work on that and get back to council. I think that would be a good thing.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have our boards and commissions, which is Mr. Bobby Raines. He had, he had to leave unexpectedly, and I feel sure we could probably move forward with, do we have his?
Yes.
You have that?
Yes.
All right, so it is eleven A, which is the Ridgeburg Fire Protection District. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Raines' recommendation for Mr. Dale Stale for the Ridgeburg Fire Protection Tax District.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. All right, next we have executive session, which is, we have two matters. First is, A, the discussion of matters relating to the proposed location expansion or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, Project P twenty-four-eighty. And then we have item twelve B, which is the same for Project twenty-five zero-one.